I call the Cleveland Heights University Heights City School Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer, what you call the role?
Mr. Cobal.
Here.
Ms. Bevler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Mr. Zucker.
Okay, I'd like to have a motion to move to executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 1222G1 for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, demotion, or compensation of an employee or official of the school district and pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, Section 121222G2 for the purpose of considering the sale of property at competitive bidding since disclosure at this time would give an unfair competitive or bargaining advantage to persons whose personal, private interest is adverse to the general public interest.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Gainer.
Mr. Cobal.
Yes.
Ms. Bevler.
Yes.
Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Okay, we're going to convene into executive session.
See y'all in three hours.
Okay, we're back in regular session. The design team and the district administrators are here to present an update on our high school facilities project and answer questions that the board may have at this point. No action is expected to take place tonight. However, both a regular board meeting and a special board meeting will be held on Tuesday, December 16th, at which time public comments related to facilities will be held, a public comment opportunity. Tonight, we won't have public comments. This will be an opportunity for our design team to work with the board and maybe updating the board and clarifying any issues that might be forthcoming. So I'll turn it over to Steve.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Register, and we have John Arcini and Gary Balog and Steve Zanoni here with us again tonight, and I'm going to turn it. Steve, do you have any initial comments to make?
No.
Turn it right over to Gary to provide the update.
Well, we are happy to be back here tonight. We had, obviously, the last couple meetings that we've had, there's been a lot of discussion, there's been questions raised by both the board and the public. And so what we have done is we've gone back based on some direction that we've been given by the administration, and we've made some modifications to the design of the building. And I will get right to those. So, first of all, on the site, we will be submitting to the planning commission tomorrow a preliminary set of documents outlining what we think the site is going to look like and how it's going to function. Currently, as we said before, there are 228 spaces that are on the site. The new plan has 229 spaces. That was, that just, that is a little bit of serendipity. It's not, you know, there could be more or less, but that's approximately the number of spaces that we'd have in the new plan. The city has, in their last meeting with the city, which we had after our last, I think our last work session, they are willing to provide additional off-site spaces in their facilities across Cedar Road. Don't know the exact number and don't know what the terms would be, but they seem to be very willing to work with the district if there are, if there's a need for additional spaces beyond the 229 spaces. If you have 228 spaces currently, it seems to me that you'd kind of have a status quo That also, that includes 27 angled parking spaces on Washington. And the way we discussed is during the day, during the school hour day, you may have a hang tag in there, and that would be reserved parking for those people who have that hang tag, but after school hours and then on weekends, it would be open parking for the city. And so, and that comes into the discussion about who maintains it, you know, who polices it, that kind of stuff. And that's all, that's all still, needs to be discussed with the city administration. The ball fields will remain, softball field and the baseball field. We may reorient those because during the construction process, we are going to probably deconstruct part of those fields. So it may be an opportunity to maybe reorient those so that they're a little bit more suitable for the new parking arrangement. Parking around at the perimeter of the stadium at this point will remain. Those are, those spaces are included in that 229 figure. There will, there is currently right now, we think about a 70,000 square foot net reduction in the hard surface and roof area from your existing condition. So that means that you've got, we think, what's a football, football field is about 50, 57,000 square feet plus or minus, so you're, you're removing about a football and 1.25 football fields of runoff. So we're improving the runoff situation right off the bat, but we still have to deal with that runoff and storm water in a, in a, in a sustainable fashion. The freestanding athletic building has been somewhat downsized. It will contain restrooms for, and concessions for the visitors and for the home side. And surprisingly, I think I might have mentioned this before, surprisingly enough, the city would like the building to be located at the corner of Cedar and Lee, out on that space. They see that kind of open area as not very good in terms of planning. They would like to see the building out there. It kind of encloses that corner, you know, brings the building closer up to the street. We think it's great because it kind of gives us a point where we can have entry for both visitors and home at that corner, and it seems to make sense in terms of where additional parking is located, public parking. We also think that maybe there's an opportunity there to incorporate some of the salvage components of the, of the building, maybe make some portals that the home and visitor patrons could go through. Might be a nice gesture back to the original building. So, here's the site. So we're talking about parking along the two drives, pretty much packing it out, and then some additional parking, two rows of parking here. You see that in this, in this drawing, we've kind of shown how you could possibly or potentially reorient the baseball fields, softball field. The existing parking around the stadium remains, and obviously, and the parking out here. And during the summer hours, the pool's over here, so it makes sense to have a significant amount of parking available for the public to use those spaces. And then the athletic building would be on this corner out here, and as I said before, potentially you could have visitor entrance over here and concessions, and then home entrance over here, restrooms and concessions on the home side. So that's where we're at with the site. Anybody have any comments about the site?
As you're thinking, I would just mention that the planning commission submission is December 10th, and that's for a January planning commission meeting. And the city requests, asks that we hold a neighborhood, community meeting prior to that planning commission meeting, approximately a week in advance. And so we would, we would do that for those immediate neighbors, business and residents around the school to get their reactions to this and concerns and comments in advance of the planning commission meeting in January.
And this, and what we're submitting to them is not cast stone.
Right.
It can be amended. So, but what we wanted to do was we wanted to get something in front of them fairly early so that if there are any, as Sam Bellis said, kerfuffles, that we kind of get those on the radar early.
And as you know, they like to see a complete package when you submit to them. So it's important that we show them something that's complete, even though we can change it.
Is the, I assume the plan is still up on Washington to have the parallel parking by the ball fields and by the stadium, right, on the street itself? Not the diagonal, but on either side of it, that that would still be as it now is?
Yes. Yes.
I like the suggested orientation for the two fields. The only thing I, and I like the building at the corner, Cedar and Lee, I like that a lot. The one thing I would suggest is the building for the, the building for the cell tower, I think that's a choke point right now between the, that building and Lee Road. I think there's, I would suggest two things. One, if we could see, if we get the very least, they have the chain link fence behind the building, if we can move it a little bit, gives us more of a pathway. But also, if we could talk with whoever, whoever the cell tower is, talk to those folks and say, hey, what do we got to do to, can we move you from one side, not us, but I would, I would be open to extending their lease if we could get them to move to the other side of the, of the stands, because that would give us a lot more of a plaza, because right now it looks like a choke point.
You know, and we're just, we're still, you know, obviously, we've done probably four or five iterations of that building, and this is another one. But we're thinking that we'd like to maybe plan it so that you could, at some point in the future, if you got funding or donor funding, you could add to that building maybe some type of Hall of Fame or some other kind of function out there.
Yeah, because I guess I, I like the idea, the only concern I have at this point is just that, that cell building is so massive that it's really, and it's been there a while, so I would imagine from a technological standpoint, they may be open to something. But I think if we could have a conversations with them about that, because I think that gives us a lot more potential to turn that into a true plaza kind of a space, because right now it seems a little bit of a choke point. But otherwise, I love it. I think it's great.
Is that, let's see, in the lower right-hand quadrant over by the baseball diamond, the little horizontal strip, is that like a speed bump, or is that actually where no traffic has to be able to go through there, right? There's a little strip across the parking lot there, a little gray, no, on the other side, yeah, right.
Oh, here? Oh, that is, that just designates a crosswalk area for, because all your, your primary handicap parking is right there.
And the...
And that's the, that's the main interest in the building.
The trees you're showing north of the softball field, those are existing ones, correct?
Yes.
And then, but the ones between the parking lot and the softball field, those would be suggested plantings?
Yeah. There are, this is just kind of a schematic that doesn't show all the vegetation, but there are a number of pine trees that are around the field here that are not in the way of anything, so they're going to stay. There's a couple of large specimen trees out here that will stay. And there's a couple out in the, in the courtyard. I don't know what the root depth is, but there's, I think, a 22-inch and a 15-inch. So we'll look at, we'll look at some of the larger canopy trees that are there that aren't in the way of anything, see if we can, if we can keep them, because obviously that would be beneficial than trying to buy another tree of that caliper. Okay, the building floor plans, this is, this is something major. A decision was made by the administration to keep pharmacy and clinical health careers programs at Delisle. AutoTech, which was to be temporarily relocated to Delisle, will now be permanently relocated to Delisle. And also, some of the CTE administrative staff will be, will be relocated to Delisle. So that's a major, that is a major change in terms of the program for the building. We will work with the representatives from those specific programs to develop the plans or to renovate those areas, and those are all going to be done as a part of the high school project. So cosmetology, which is currently over at Delisle, would be moved to the high school, but these, these three programs would, would remain at Delisle. Some of the square footage that was previously in the high school that was used for these programs, we've rearranged the plans. Obviously, when you pull that kind of square footage out, you know, the, the plan changes primarily on the Washington and then a portion of the Cedar level. But some of those spaces, if you recall, we had pulled some of the athletic spaces, specifically the, the home locker rooms and some of the support spaces out, and they were, they were going to be located in that athletic building. Now they're not in the athletic building, but now we have space inside the originally planned footprint of the building, square footage, to, to place those back into the building, along with visitor locker rooms. And the advantage of, of doing that is that you get dual use out of those spaces. So they're not just, they're not, they're not segregated from the main building. So in other words, during the school year, if you need locker space or some of these support spaces, they're right inside the building. And with this, though, you still end up with a net reduction in the overall building footprint, which should, we think, save some dollars, which can then be allocated to something, some other portion of the project. Yes?
I, I guess I'd like, Dr. Dixon, for you to say a little bit about the process that you undertook with the staff and with the other folks to, to make that recommendation.
Well, part of it, the auto tech was going to be relocated and a, and a large expense made for that. So we just decided, instead of spending those additional dollars to move it back, we can just let that remain at Delisle. Also, we had a, someone from the CTE team working group state that there was a concern that the current programs at the high school did not have adequate space. So we kept that in mind and stated, will they, could we maximize the current space at Delisle and enhance it for the programs that were there and not move those programs to the high school? And then lastly, also, thinking about the growth of CTE programs. By having the programs housed at the high school, we're limited to future programs and space for those programs. So really, not limiting ourselves, the district, to programs that just would be housed at the high school, but making room at Delisle for growth of future CTE programs. So we brainstormed and cabinet what those programs will look like with some, some future programs, thinking about what the future programs were, and if we had space and working with those teachers at those current programs, pharmacy and clinical health, and enhancing those programs at those buildings.
So can, can anyone say more about the approximation? I realize that plans, I'm assuming plans haven't been developed for that enhancement at Delisle.
Correct.
But what the space differences might be from the last iteration of the high school and, and the, and the proposed space at Delisle, just an approximation? If you can't, you can't. I, you know, it's okay.
Yeah, we really can't. It is, it is, I can say this, it is significantly larger for those three programs for putting them in Delisle. Two of the programs are presently there. They have some, some features. Here's a good example. They have their own classrooms for each of those programs. We were going to be sharing classrooms in the new high school, so you could say, hey, we, they gained a couple of classrooms. The same with auto tech. We're going to be able to provide a separate classroom for auto tech in Delisle, which we didn't have, an independent, just solely for auto tech classroom. It was a shared, shared classroom besides the, the CTE space itself. So it is significantly, there is more square footage in terms of, for those, those particular programs at Delisle compared to when they were in the high school itself. I think, Gary, that's about, I think I...
Yeah, at this point, all I would say is, all I would say is that the square footage that is in the, is in the current POR is less than the square footage that is currently, that they currently have over at, over at Delisle.
When we're talking dollars and, because obviously, we're not spending money to have temporary space for the auto program, and then from a dollars and cents standpoint, and I got some other questions here as well, from a dollars and cents standpoint, this suggestion of moving, modifying the CTE program to basically having some at the high school and some at Taylor, I'm sorry, at Delisle, what kind of a financial impact is this having?
We haven't, we haven't gone through all the elements. We've now given this to the construction manager. We do believe, though, based on just square footage, that there are, and I really don't want to make a promise today of an actual dollar, but we really believe that this will solve a couple of issues that we've had as we were at the end of schematic design. One being that we'll gain dollars because of this. It's going to be less expensive, even though we're upgrading the spaces as CTE spaces in Delisle. We're not saying that we're just leaving those existing spaces as is for pharmacy and health. Those are going to be upgraded. So we're going to, we're going to come in there, we're going to put, put new, it's going to be as if it were part of the high school program. Same with the auto tech. We're going to spend a little bit more money, we're doing it as a temporary, we're going to spend, but it's significantly less because we don't have to build the space. So we gained some dollars there. We also have some other areas of gaining dollars, which we're hoping, and we've talked to the CM, and they feel pretty comfortable with this, that that'll find us the dollars to do the parking. If you recall, when we were at the end of schematic design, we didn't have the costs for all of this additional parking. So we, we should be able, we should be able to handle, handle that. We should be able to handle the, that smaller athletic building within the overall project budget. That's pretty important because we basically said, if we're going to do this, we need to do it complete with the monies that we have today. And thirdly, and you'll hear this in the next piece, is on the HVAC. We believe that we can go to the hybrid, make the hybrid system the base for the project, which is the hybrid geothermal. And so with these pieces, because what we've done is we reduce expensive square footage, which is on the high school site, we're gaining some pieces there. And then we also have some dollars that are coming to us from the stadium project because we came in under budget, and we're looking at pulling those dollars together. The CM hasn't done all the analysis, but they feel very comfortable with this. They actually were really pleased. They think it also solves some of our other issues. Remember, we were a little bit over, that we may not have to take as many of those, of those targets, especially on the, on some of the, like electrical and things like that. So we feel very comfortable with this, but I, Eric, I can't give you today a specific, a specific number.
Okay. When, when can we anticipate seeing schematics for Taylor, or Delisle? I'm not a, I'm very reticent about spending issue 81 dollars on any of the footprint buildings. So that's why I'm very, I understand, that's why I need to see what do we, what do we, what it's going to look like, because that building is like a, there's a maze, there's like a menatire at the end. And then if we're, if we're putting CTE in there, that pretty much means we, because we never had a plan for Taylor, that means we're now sort of stuck with Taylor. So that's before we make that commitment. That's, we're now making a 25, 30-year commitment at least to Taylor, which we have had zero discussions on previously. That's why I'm a little concerned about, I mean, I love the roof. The roof's great. The rest of the building, I can't stand. So that's why I'm very cautious about making that kind of a decision.
I would say, though, to be very frank, we will not have those numbers by next week. All right? I mean, we just, we just won't. We, we will have the CM, who will talk about that and say they feel comfortable with all of these shifts. We probably won't know the specific numbers until, let's say, January, February would be at the, be February, February, March, where we would know specifically the costs for every specific space.
Floor plans, as far as...
Oh, floor plans. Gary, can you, for the Delisle area?
For Delisle.
For Delisle. What we want to do...
We've already kind of, we've already kind of met, and we've kind of done programming already, so we understand the needs.
Right.
So what we would do is, is we would take a look at the existing spaces. We'd have to say, have somebody go over there and, and field measure all of those spaces, you know, take the, the existing drawings, field measure it. So I don't think we're going to be able to see anything until after, probably sometime in January.
Fair. And then, explain to me, why are we moving, if we're, why are we moving cosmetology from Delisle to the high school where it currently is in Delisle? I don't understand that.
Steve, what do we say, when we're talking about moving cosmetology to the high school instead of allowing it to stay at Delisle?
It, well, it was always going to be at the new high school originally.
Right.
And, and there was, there was a major reason, which was really interesting from, from the, and I don't know if you want to explain, but we, we had meetings, they very much want to be in the new high school. They feel very strongly that they're, they're losing out, and particularly like at proms or special events, where they could be, you know, doing nails for students and things like that, where, where they would just get more usage for their, and more opportunities for their students. And also, it's a better way in terms of those students to get to know the other students in this high school. So they feel very, very strongly, and when you see this, what Gary's come up with is even for the public, having a good parking arrangement and that, they felt very strongly, and they did not feel that their space was being, even though it was reduced, they did not feel that reduction was bad. They felt that it was more efficient, even though it was less square footage, than what they're coming from. So they seemed very, very positive to be in, be in the new high school.
When you say "they," who do you mean?
This was the group, we, Gary, can you tell who we met with from cosmetology, who runs the cosmetology program?
Oh, okay, so the instructors.
Yes, the instructors.
Okay. And so did you have those similar conversations with the pharmacy and clinical health careers and auto tech instructors about remaining at Delisle with this enhanced, expanded space?
Not, not as yet. Not as yet. The reason we knew about what the instructor for cosmetology, they told us that when we were developing their layouts in the new high school. They brought up why they thought it was so good for them to be at that location. We have heard, I would be very frank, we have heard from both publicly, from pharmacy and clinical health, teachers, their concerns about the square footage of their spaces.
Right. Yeah. Well, I, I heard that also. I think that the, the issue for me becomes, I get that this is all a give and take, that we're going to have to make tough decisions, but I, you know, one of our commitments was to bring it all together at the high school, and I get that we're having difficulty doing that. I heard the upsetness with the space reductions or inadequate space from some people's perspective.
Perspectives, yes.
But I, and I appreciate the, the flexibility that you're showing here. I did also hear from some community members, just let us keep it at, let them keep it at Delisle because it's much better space than they're going to have at the high school. But that doesn't mean it was from the instructors.
And then I'm not, and I'm not sure either that, that there was no consideration for the growth of CTE programs too, when the decision was made for it all to go to the high school. Were they really thinking about adding new programs? And I don't know that, but I think we're talking about the growth and adding different, additional programs.
You're probably right. We weren't thinking strategically about that at the time.
And I'm not sure, but...
Yeah, the issue ends up being if we, because we're already, it seems like we've already gone down this path, if we continue down this path of splitting, instead of having CTE all in a high school, having it two locations, that was one of the things, I believe it was part of the campaign literature, I believe it's also part of the, the FAC is checking us on it as well. So if we're going to be deviating from what was originally a component of it, we need to have a solid dollars and cents and programmatic standpoint of explaining why we're doing that, because that's a, that's a major deviation from what we had, so we're going to do.
Would I be paraphrasing what you said correctly if I said that the main reasons that you're, that you feel that this might be a good path to go is because programmatically and from the standpoint of creating opportunities both now and for the future, you see that as a, this is a, as a positive step?
Yes.
So the fact is, the, gaining the extra space at the high school is really, not the impetus for this, it's actually just a wonderful byproduct if, if in fact, we're able to stay within budget because of it. And, and I mean, I guess I might differ a little bit. I, yes, I know things were part of campaign literature. I also think that it depends, if, if we decide to go to... go this way, I think it also depends with how we create that space to make it important space, meaningful space, expandable space for the future. I, I don't completely agree with you on the, I mean, I'm not crazy about that, that building right now, but that doesn't mean I wouldn't be crazy about it if these brilliant architects come up with something really nice for it. So, I, I think that, I'm not, that wouldn't shut me down. Help me, but, and I know it's probably not much, but if we were moving those spaces, doesn't that change the parking needs for the high school? Because some of the staff would then park over at Delisle then, right? As well as potentially students as well. So, wouldn't that change the number of spaces needed at the high school? I mean, again, it, I don't even need you need to change the plan, but really, it doesn't mean we have even, rather than the spinal tap, it's one more. It doesn't, don't we really then have a lot more, or some more? Because that would mean some of the staff wouldn't need parking at the high school then.
I'd look at it a little differently, because presently, you have three CTE programs at Delisle, and they have parking.
Oh, good point. Yeah, that's-
And we have, it kind of, it kind of evens out.
Okay, that's fair. That's fair.
But the new parking plan keeps us at the same number of spaces that presently are at, at the high school, and the same number of CTE programs that are presently at the high school.
Right. I, I will say that, and I, who probably was less supportive of the extra building, hearing that you're, the way you're, you're seeing it now would mean that it could be within the overall budget is much more appealing to me.
It has to be.
No, I get that, but there was also other money that we-
Yes, yes.
-we started to try in your mark or whatever. I think this is a much more robust way-
Because if we didn't do it somewhere, we would have to find that space in the, in the building. Because we, we, we need to have concessions. We need to have toilet rooms for visitors.
For next year.
For, exactly. And even in the future, even if we didn't have it, we would need, we need that space. And so, it needs to be part of the overall project budget.
One to the other, and, and Steve, you can correct me if I'm, if I'm being incorrect. The, the state, the, the, the School Facilities Commission, in their master plan, is only co-funding four, four CTE programs. So, by, by doing this, it seems, you know, I, I, I'm not quite sure, but I, I think the, the funding mechanism or the, the formula may change a little bit, may change favorably, that more of the square footage that we're building will be co-funded.
Co-funded.
Right.
We may, by doing this, and Gary is correct, right now, the way the master plan works with the state, we only get four CTE programs. So, all other CTE programs have to be funded by, by us. It's interesting. We're, we're now taking those spaces that are at Delisle, those are some of the one, we're going to fund those. We have to use our own dollars, but we're not using as much of our dollars, because it's, it's less expensive, because we have actual physical building to work with, which is great. So, it's renovation and pieces. Then, by these elements, getting them back into, into the building, when we have these outbuildings, let's say for, for, for the student, the lockers and that, the state would look very disfavorable, because it wouldn't be part of our building. So, now we've shoved some of those spaces back into, we, we feel we're going to probably wind up with a greater, a greater amount, a percentage of this building being co-funded than what we originally anticipated for, with the state of Ohio.
So, I would just go, just sort of reiterating something I said before. If in fact we go this path, I just think it's important for us to be sure that the spaces we create or, or enhance at Delisle are exceptional spaces that, that, that make it so that, again, you want it to be a destination, not, not a, we, this, we had to offload something. This is not what this can be about. So, and it sounds to me, it sounds to me like that's what you're saying. So, I-
And Kel, I want, I want to reiterate that. I think it is, it is a positive in, in a number of ways. It allows then for future expansion of, of career tech spaces, which we'd never had in any of the plans, and it allows for those expansions to be at two locations. Now, we've gained a, a site area on our site at the high school, maybe for CTE, or maybe for something else that we don't, we didn't have in the, at the end of schematic design. So, now we, the positive is, is now we can expand CTE even more, either at Delisle or at the high school in the future. So, it gives you, to me, it gives you greater opportunities to make CTE a much bigger program than what it is today. On the space side, the space side.
So, cosmetology was previously over here. This is, this is the Washington level plan. Cosmetology is now over here. Still has public outside access. And if we go, if I go back to the site plan, there is, there is parking over here. So, if there were outside clients who were coming in, they, they could park here and then go right into cosmetology. So, the locker room spaces are inside the building. One of the other things that happened is, is we moved, we rearranged, there's, this, this whole space down here has been rearranged, but there is a training facility that's associated with, with PE and athletics. But we were able to back that up to exercise, exercise science, which has some of the same kind of equipment. And so, there might be some synergy between the actual training program and, and athletics, either coaches or athletes in the high school. So, that's, that's also a benefit. Up on, up on the Cedar level, this is now, is that FCS?
FCS.
So, so FCS, which is the, the, I'm going to say the Food and Consumer Science, is still associated with the kitchen. The space that was here, that was formerly where FCS is, is now part of the kitchen and mechanical space for that. So, we've, we've lost square footage, net square footage, at the high school, but I think in terms of the arrangement, still keeps somewhat of the original design of the footprint. And as Steve said, the benefit is, is that now, instead of having just a small area for expansion, you have all of this area for future expansion, and potentially second floor expansion over the top of, of where cosmetology is. So, and we would, if we're going to do that, we would probably plan that you would add a second floor to this space at some point.
Is it, oh, oops. Can we get this as a PDF, because-
Yes.
I can't read this, to save me. A couple of questions on the first two floors. On the, now that you, the massing, you've changed for the pool and the auxiliary gym. Why, what, because I remember before you had the exterior of the auditorium had sort of a homage to the, some of the, the brickwork and design. Are you going to have like some sort of symmetrical component with that in the auxiliary gym now that it's, that the walls sort of have been-
You mean this space, this wall here?
Yeah, as viewed from Washington. Are you, are you-
We still have that.
You're still, okay.
Yeah, we still have that. And with all the modifications we've been making, we've been looking at that, at that Washington elevation. Because as you can see, what happened was, the footprint of the building changed, the footprint of the building changed the most on the northern half of the site. So, that's where those elements come into play. But right now, that, that element that you're talking about is still, still within there.
And the question, I'm, I'm having trouble with, we've got, so two sets, two locker rooms for the pool. Okay. We've got two locker rooms for the auxiliary gym. We have two locker rooms for the main gym, and then we have two more locker rooms. I'm, I'm having trouble understanding why we need a visitors' locker room and then a game day locker room, when we already have ostensibly four other locker rooms that we could be using. It seems like a whole lot of square footage allocated towards a locker room that's going to be used only on game day. Because if it's not going to be used on, if it could be used more than just game day, then why not make that-
We, the intention would be is that the locker room spaces would be used both on a, could be used on a daily basis outside of, of the fall. Could be used by other teams in the spring, or it could be used, in other words, those, those locker rooms are accessible from both the outside and the inside.
I, I know. And I, I, I hear-
Are you concerned about the, the, the number of locker spaces or the-
I'm concerned about the number of locker room spaces. I'm looking at the square footage allocation, and I'm also seeing how a locker room may be designed as it's for the, all teams, but I could see one team perhaps monopolizing it over time. So, that's why, I mean, I would, I can, why not just make the, the locker rooms next to the auxiliary gym bigger, and have that be what you use on game day as well?
One of the concerns is, is, you know, you know, although you have an artificial turf, you know, that you're still, there's a certain amount of debris that comes in off the field when people come in. So, if we move those, if we, if we create space here, or space here for those teams, then that means you're going to be, and, and baseball in the spring is a little bit, and softball is a little bit different, because those are fairly, you know, you're playing on a dirt field. So, you're going to be bringing, you know, part of it is, is, is the amount of, of dirt and debris that you'd bring into the building.
No, I mean, I totally get the idea. I'm just looking at the, and previously, I mean, that's a huge, I'm looking, that's a large amount of square footage for right now, where we, the locker room that the south gym uses for gym class is the same locker room that the team's going to use for practice, and it's the locker room they use on game day. I'm just looking at this and seeing, it's a whole lot of locker rooms that the auxiliary gym and the competition gym, when it's not gym class, those are sit and fallow. And then, the locker room for the, you know, let's call it the wet locker rooms, if you will, for game day, how are those going to be utilized, you know, especially the visitor locker room? That's going to be unused unless there's a sporting event, and an outdoor sporting event as well. So, that's what I'm trying to, because I know part of the idea with the classrooms was to make it that, we would have classrooms utilization would be far greater by changing our, it's not a teacher's classroom, it's a classroom. I'm, I'm a little, and this, again, I'm sort of surprised by this, the volume of space allocated for the home game day locker room.
I'm going to take a, I'm going to take a stab and say that I think the, the quantity and, and square footage of locker room spaces that you have in the new plan may be slightly less than currently the, the amount of locker room space that you have at the existing building. In part, because it's so, you, you know, the, the locker room spaces that you have, the existing, we only have, but you've kind of absorbed a lot of areas and turned them into, to team spaces. I, I'll say this, that we'll, we'll look at the quantities. And most of those spaces are dual-use spaces. They have both PE lockers and team lockers in them. The other thing is, is I was, I'm all, I am amazed at the number of, of sports that are offered here, and the number of sports that are offered concurrently. So, it's, it's not, you know, it, in a normal high school, you'd say, well, you've got spring sports and you've got winter sports. But here, you seem to have just a lot.
Well, I guess, I, and I, I think we have probably twenty-five, twenty-six programs, and I'm probably incorrect in that.
Eighty-two coaches, I think.
Well, that's, that's a whole other topic. We don't, but the, the issue is, I, for, for us, what we need to be able to explain, when someone looks at this and, hey, that's a lot of locker room space. When we have other departments saying, hey, athletic department gets everything they want, we need to be able to understand and explain why this is-
Unfortunately, a football locker, and what we're thinking about doing is, is, since you have, in recent, in somewhat recently, you have installed new football lockers. And, and my understanding is they dress one hundred and twenty-five on the team. So, you have one hundred and twenty-five lockers, and those are not small lockers. So, in part, that one particular locker room just ends up being larger because of, of the equipment that they're storing and the amount of space that you need to kind of maneuver around in there. So, we will, we will look at those and we will be as frugal as possible where we, where we care.
Well, again, I mean, because, as, as a, if I'm a civilian and I'm looking at this, I'm like, that's a whole lot of locker rooms. We need to be able to have the justifications and the rationale behind what we're doing, because that, again, we have to explain this to the public.
Last, H, as Steve said, we will be developing the hybrid geothermal now as, as the base bid. We will develop an alternative design for full geothermal. Typically, you know, you do, after schematic design, you pick a single system, because we, you know, we've done a life cycle cost for, I think, four different systems now. Then, it was narrowed down to three, now it's narrowed down to two. So, to, to do the base bid hybrid system, there are no additional fees, because that's just part of the base bid. But to develop the alternative system, the, these are our, these are just our direct engineers' fees would be, is, is ninety thousand dollars. So, that's a, that's a consideration when doing this. That, that includes development through construction documents now.
And bidding.
And bidding. If at some point during this development, when we get those numbers, probably sometime in January, you may want to only pursue to the, to the final, through the final documents, a single system rather than two systems.
So, so if I'm reading this correctly, then, for us, just to, hey, let's see what it would cost to do full geothermal, just to figure that out, that's a ninety thousand dollar expense.
That's to take it through, that's to take it through bidding.
Bidding.
Okay. Oh, good, bidding. Okay. So, if we want, if we want to have a bided alternate, we got to pretty much sink almost a hundred grand to roll the dice that hopefully it won't come in a million dollars more than we saw previously. Is that, am I understanding correctly?
Or, or if there's bid savings, which you could, you could, you could use on that. Now, probably there are two questions. First question, if I were you, was, do we have ninety thousand dollars to spend? We do. We have a thing called a soft cost contingency, and it was put in that, in the bid, in the projects for this very purpose, where the, you may make decisions during the design phase to use that. If we don't spend it, if we don't spend our soft cost contingency, we, we actually will use it to build stuff, all right? So, the, it's a tough, it's a tough decision, because, you, 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 you know, if we could use that ninety thousand on the building, or on something, you know, that's physical, that would be certainly an advantage. So, so-
So, go back to what you said about through, the numbers through January. Take us, take us back to what you meant by that. I, because, were you saying that as, as we get more detail from, from Gilbane, we might find savings so that we only bid one?
If we, if, if we-
Or we might find it so over that we decide we only bid one?
If we continue developing this plan of retaining two or three programs at Delisle, and then reconfiguring the high school, with, with any savings from that, along with potentially, because, you know, there's, there's things that we're not, you know, we're not, we may not think of right, right now in terms of, of costs, savings, but just in terms of looking at, you know, we're looking at the, the pavement that's there. The plan currently, the new plan, in, in terms of the site, utilizes more area where there is existing paving. So, you know, is it, is it new paving, or are we just, are we milling and then redoing the, the storm drainage and then repaving that area, as opposed to building a whole new parking area someplace? So, so when you, when you figure all of these things in, I think you'll be in a, a better position where you may say, and, and we will have developed the, the alternate, the alternate design to a point where maybe there's a little bit more accurate take on what the actual cost would be. And then, at that point, you may say, these are, these are our priorities. These are what we're, these are the things that we're going to, to pursue, because we think it's the, in the best interest of the district. And what we're suggesting is that potentially, you only bid one system. Either, either because you see some other opportunities to, to spend those dollars someplace else, or you see an opportunity and you, and you would prefer to go with a full geothermal.
And, and the hybrid doesn't limit you, the hybrid doesn't limit you in the future if funds do become available, or, or, or if the ability to, to, you know, for, for renewable resources become available to continue and- available, to continue and potentially go to the full geothermal. So, this doesn't, this doesn't limit you in that way.
We talked about that.
And we talked about that.
So, that would mean you'd design in the manifold or whatever.
That's correct, yes.
But if we decided to go that route, at that point, we'd have to spend $90,000 on the design. If we don't do it.
Of some of that 90,000, if we continue this route, we will be spending some of that 90,000 with the engineers to get to that point.
Okay.
Yes, not the full 90,000, but we will spend some dollars.
Right. At next week's meeting, I guess, we have a meeting next week, are we voting or making decisions on anything next week in regards to that issue, anyone? And if so, what are we making, what are we acting on next week?
Well, I think we'd like you to react to the things that we presented tonight and give the design team, you know, take a vote, but give them the direction to say, yes, these, the site plan looks good, keep developing it. These floor plans look good, the move of the CTE, we're comfortable with that.
The preview for next week, then.
And, that's right. And, and the, this move now to using the hybrid geothermal as the base bid, full geothermal as the alternate, dropping out the boiler chiller as the base, so that was a third design, we dropped that out, we're not going to pursue that. That's the feedback we're looking for.
And the hybrid was coming in approximately a half million to three quarters of a million more than the.
Three quarters of a million over the boiler chiller.
And if you guys were to run the numbers, if we wanted, if we said, hey, run us the numbers on a boiler chiller and the hybrid, that, that's another, how many thousands of dollars?
The design fees would go up.
It's almost double.
Almost double.
It's almost double. All the way through bidding.
So, by dropping the boiler chiller off, that saves us money from just running the scenario.
That's right.
Conversely, but this all, at the meantime, though, we've, you know, this is sort of recommending drop boiler chiller and save the money from running the scenario, but you got the upspense of another three quarters of a million.
Right. And we think that we can make that decision now.
Okay. But when, on the flip side, we still have to, since we've gone, theoretically, if we make that course, we need to figure out monies to cover that three quarter million dollar upgrade.
Right.
Understood.
Yes. But I would say this is that, they all kind of interconnect here, what we're presenting, okay? Especially with the CTE and, and the inclusion of reducing the footprint of the building, all those things really help us get the hybrid and the parking is what we're really, really talking about today. Because as you know, at the end of schematic design, we just had a boiler chiller and we had, we didn't have parking. And so, and I'm not saying that the CTE was the reason we were able to do this. It seems to be a really positive piece to allow for greater growth of CTE by moving some over at Delisle and then allowing us to have footprint available or site available to even expand the high school, the new high school.
I know we can't have a comprehensive, at the very least, if we could have the floor plans of Delisle current, what, you know, what you're, not, you know, it's not like on the, up there schematic, but, okay, these are, these are the spaces that are going to be allocated for, it'd be good to have a sense, because I've been a tailor enough to get a vibe for the building. I'd like to know, okay, what are you proposing, what's going to be where? Just, you know, crosshatched, I don't really, it doesn't have to be, you know, pretty just a real gut, here's where things are going to be, as well as at least some general idea of if we wanted to expand CTE programming square footage in the building, how would that occur? Because it'd be, because those buildings aren't exactly, yeah, I'd be very curious, are you moving stuff out, where, if you were going to add stuff?
The last part of that's relatively easy. I mean, you'd have the whole cosmetology suite would be available for future expansion at that point.
Again, that kind of visual, visual, I like to, because I'm familiar with the building, but not enough, because I know we have so many different things in there that I'd be very curious to see how we're, so again, I'm very reticent about spending money, because we don't, I, again, I know we have a relatively new roof. I don't know the HVAC systems, anything on that, what we're planning to do with that building 10, 20, 30 years out. We now, by putting this in there, we're committing ourselves to that building. I think there's value for us knowing that, okay, we may make the CTE spaces a Taj Mahal and the rest of the stuff is a hodgepodge of 80s, 90s, and 2000s renovations. You can see that through, when you walk through the building with the carpet. You know, this is 1972, this is 1995. I'd like to get a sense of what we're going to do with that building long term.
Okay.
Did you start to say something, Cal?
Just real quickly, I, so if I, programmatically, it sounds like, we went down this path because we need to find compromises, we need to find ways to make this all work. What I heard tonight was programmatically, this set of solutions you came up with actually is a positive, rather than just a compromise. Putting you on the spot, Gary, you're welcome in advance. Architecturally, is this, is this a plus, what you've come to, or a compromise? What do you think about this?
I would say it's a plus for both buildings. I think it result, you know, given the, given the circumstances of both budget and design, and frankly, for a long time, I think as Nancy said, there, there had been voices, kind of, you know, you know, we want to listen to all the voices.
Thinking the same things.
And so, in some, in some sense, it's, it's responding to the voices that we've heard for these things. These, you know, all, everything that we talked about tonight is a response to, to what was expressed in the meetings that we've had. So, to me, the building got better because we have responded to concerns. And those concern, you know, from our standpoint, those, those things have created new problems, but we welcome the problems because we like solving problems. So, but Stephen and I were talking tonight, and I told him, I says, I said, the plan gets better the more we kind of tinker with it. It's, it's becoming more, I think a lot of the spaces are becoming more usable in terms of, and the entire building is becoming more usable, both spaces. And Delisle is not that distant from the high school, it's, it's fairly close. One of the, one of the other things is that, you know, there's a consideration to move some of the, some of the CTE administration over to that space too, which would create a stronger connection between those buildings, because now you, you know, you've, you've got them involved with, with both rather than kind of just being here. So, I think that, I think that helps a lot. In terms of the architecture for the spaces, I think we can make some really cool spaces, because we'll be able to spend more, I don't want to call it, we, you know, because we won't have to build a shell, the dollars that we were spending in those spaces will go for more, I'm going to say functional things inside those spaces to make them more useful for the students and the instructors.
And I'm glad you just said that last comment, because I guess I would continue to challenge you, and you've clearly challenged yourselves, because you keep doing, coming back with these type of things. You know, there's, they're keep, we keep imposing constraints and restrictions and, and, you know, at the last meeting, when we talked about HVAC and we heard some, some public outcry regarding the, you know, the necessity to do everything we can to incorporate some level of geothermal for you to come back to us already with, if we do these things, look, we've, now we can make the base, the hybrid at least. I think that, that, yes, all these challenges also bring opportunities, and I think, as you just said, there are opportunities to create really exciting spaces that, that would make it better. I mean, I think people walk in with, with an idea in their head and say, oh my gosh, everything's got to be here, and everything's got to be this, and everything's got to be that. It really is what you do with the opportunities that are presented to you, or the challenges that you turn into opportunities. So, I guess I'll challenge you again to seize these opportunities. And I'll stop talking.
I guess I, the only thing that I, that remains for me a concern is wanting to know that neither the students nor the instructors are going to feel like they are second-class citizens by being at Delisle. Because, and, you know, obviously, I know that would never be anybody's intent, but when you said, Gary, that it's close, you're so right, it's so close, but there are still logistical challenges to being a block and a half away. And what might they be? And what, what transportation issues might we have? I mean, I would really want us to, to have a plan or think about that, because, you know, I can't, I can't picture whether or how often students go back and forth. And are we going to expect them to make it that long block and a half in four minutes? I don't think so, you know? And so, and teachers for any kind of teaming or other meetings or other opportunities for collaboration outside of their departments, I just, it is close, but I would want to know, I guess I look to you mostly to, to tell us that that all can be managed.
And I think someone stated it, I think we have to, the district, we have to make sure that CTE is our priority. And we've received some great proposals for some things that we can do to enhance the program, but I don't think we lock ourselves into what we currently have. And a lot of CTE programs around the state are separate facilities, separate programs from their, from the high school programs, the building. But I, like what Cal stated, also kind of challenge the architects to come up with some really cool spaces and spaces we can grow. For example, the fire chief from the city approached me and said, hey, could we offer a fire safety program in the district? Where currently, we can't, we don't, we don't have the space. Will we have the space if we go to the high school? No. Will we have the space for that program if we have a separate facility at Delisle? Yes. So, as we anticipate growing the program and really making CTE a priority, having a CTE director at the Delisle building, really making it a priority and growing the program, I think we can really prevent some of those other obstacles. Making sure that we schedule the time for students to go back and forth between those buildings. And as we grow the programs, we may see a need that some of their core course, core courses will be offered at Delisle. So, we can make those arrangements, I believe, those adjustments for, for kids. And really make it intentional that we have opportunities for teachers to collaborate and partner together. So, I think we have to be, we will be intentional in making sure that the CTE program is a viable program, and it may grow into a STEM school. When we're thinking long term, we're not going to limit to, here's a space with an awesome roof that just, just remain the same, but we really see a future of building a program five, 10, 15, 20 years out, and what it could possibly be.
So, I guess that question about the hybrid being the base, seems that everybody's ready to move forward with that. This is, from my standpoint, this is good. I guess you do listen. Anything else, thoughts?
So, next week, we go, so next week, are we going to, is there going to be more materials, or I mean, or is it more just public comment? Is that, I mean, since we've pretty much gone into a little detail?
I don't know if there'll be more detail, but I think there'll be probably more direction or detail from the construction manager in terms of where they think some of the, some of the costs are going to be.
And more of next week, it's like, okay, we hear from the public and the board says, okay, we like this, we don't like that, here's our blessing, move forward. It'd be good.
We can do that. We can do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the work on this.
Anything else? I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
No moves.
Mr. Cobble.
Yes.
Ms. Peffler.
Yes.
Mr. Regis.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman, yes.